We are going to observe a moment of silence for prayer and meditation, and where you can be able to pray in your own way. Amen. Thank you very much. You may be seated. On behalf of the Parliament of South Africa and the Home Affairs Parliamentary Committee, I want to extend a cordial welcome to all of you that are here this morning for our public hearing. I'm joined with the team that's doing the coastal region, Honorable Tito. Honorable Kanile. Honorable Ramal Obeng. And Honorable Lekwase. You can give them a hand. Thank you. Let me also acknowledge the presence of the deputy mayor that's here, councillor, and all other councillors that may be present, other councillors that may be present. If there's any traditional leaders, if there's any community leaders, members of the clergy, community organizations, but most of all you, the citizens of our country that are here this morning in spite of this weather. Thank you very much. Let me also acknowledge the staff that's with us here today, staff from the Home Affairs Parliamentary Committee, together with our administration staff, outside, support staff, communications, as well as Parliament's protection services that are here with us. Thank you very much, and you are all welcome. At the outside, let me also indicate that the Parliamentary Committee on Home Affairs are split into two groups, and the other group which is being led by the chairperson, Honorable Mosa Chabane, and he is currently in Limpopo, conducting public hearings in Limpopo. And today, our team which is the coastal region concludes the third and last day of our public hearing in KwaZulu-Natal. And before I continue with the purpose and just a brief summary, I'm going to ask the deputy mayor just to give us a word of welcome.
Briefly, I wish to welcome everyone that is present here, the officials. We hope this meeting will be a success.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for allowing us to be here this morning. Just to take you through the purpose of today, we are here to conduct a public hearing on the Electoral Amendment Bill. And how did this amendment bill come about? It's as a result of a court case that was taken in June 2020. As part of the New Nation case, the court ruled that it was unconstitutional, the current electoral system, in that it did not allow for an independent candidate or individual to be able to contest national elections. This is your general elections where you contest the national and provincial legislatures? The current electoral system only caters for political parties to contest that space. So the court gave Parliament 24 months to conduct, to be able to complete this process, and the minister then introduced this bill to Parliament in January. It was then open for public comments from the 21st of January to the 21st of February, after which we had two days of oral submissions on a virtual platform until we started with public hearings across the country. 21st January to 21st Feb.
No, 21th January to 24th.
21st of February.
21st of February.
We've now continued, we've now started a process of public hearings, which is public participation, getting the input of communities, ordinary citizens on their input on this bill. So briefly, the draft bill proposes an amendment to the Electoral Act to include independent candidates in the national and provincial legislatures. So there were two documents that you would have received when you registered, when you came in. The one document is the actual bill in its complete form, so the entire bill, and then you had a one-page document that was a memorandum on the objects of the Electoral Amendment Bill. I refer to subsection two, which has purpose of the bill. The Electoral Amendment Bill amends the Act by A inserting certain definitions consequential to the expansion of the Act to include independent candidates as contesters to election in the National Assembly and Provincial Legislature. I also want to draw your attention to C, which is providing for the nomination of independent candidates to contest elections in the National Assembly and Provincial Legislature, and D, providing the requirements and qualifications which must be met by persons who wish to be registered as independent candidates. Then item three, which is a summary of the bill, I'm going to refer to 3.1, that says clause one amends section one of the Act to include definitions of candidate, constitution, independent candidate, list of candidates, and province. Also want to refer you to 3.5, that says clause five amends section 57A of the Act, which provides for the system of representation in the National Assembly and the Provincial Legislature by expanding the application of schedule 1A to the Act to include candidate lists and lists of independent candidates. And the rest is for your own reading, so that you'll be able to understand that. We are now going to proceed with your submissions. I want to at the outset indicate that none of our members will be asking any questions or will be responding to any of the submissions. I also want to indicate that we have not made any decision. We are here to consult, to listen to your suggestions, to listen to your submissions, your presentations, proposals, and then be able to take that back, compile a report, and then deliberate on all of the hearings that we have conducted. And also, there's no right or wrong answers. We appreciate all of the submissions that we receive. We must also be able to listen to each other and respect different views. We must also be tolerant, so that we don't interfere with somebody else that is speaking. You will be allowed between three to five minutes to present. If you exceed five minutes, I will then indicate to you as a chair that you need to wrap up, so that you make your point known, to allow for other people to present. We're also aware, and we've seen that over the last two days, that not everyone who attends does make submission, and we appreciate that. So those are, those of you who are making submissions, we appreciate your input. And lastly, if you have a submission that's quite lengthy, you can start off by presenting it or give us a summary, and you can then present it as a written submission. However, we will only receive a submission from a person that makes an oral submission. So if you come, if you're attending the hearing and you don't speak, then we won't accept a written submission. You have to be able to speak to that presentation, and then only we can receive it. Also, feel free or comfortable to speak in your own language. Whichever language best suits or you're comfortable with as a mother tongue, you may present even your submission in that language. We do have interpreters or translators, so please be comfortable about presenting in your own language. Also, please maintain all COVID protocols. As you can see, the chairs are separated, so please maintain your physical and social distancing at all times. Please ensure that you wear a face mask that's covering both your nose and your mouth, and that you will only be allowed to remove it when you are speaking or you take to the podium, or if you are having water in this instance. We'll also, as far as possible, as members, try to keep our masks on at all times. However, as the chairperson, I will be interacting most of the time with the mic, so I will try in between to have that on and off. But please bear with us, we have kept the distance from each other. Sanitizers have been provided at the hall when you enter, but thank you very much. We are now going to proceed. Okay, so we are going to start with the first group of submissions, or first round. If you would like to make a submission, you can just raise your hand and I'll identify you. Thank you very much. With the great, can you please take the first seat? Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Can you please take the second seat? Yes, sir. Please take the third seat. Yes, ma'am. Please sit the fourth seat behind him. Anyone else? We can take one more in this round. Anybody else? Okay, we'll proceed, and then by the time we come to the next round, I'm sure there'll be other speakers. Okay, let us start. Please also, when you, when you start, please introduce yourself, so your full name and surname. If you represent an organization, you are free to say that. If you represent a collective, it's always good to know what the views of other people are. If you are part of an organization, institution, residents association, et cetera, or if you're just here as an individual or citizen, that's still fine. Also, to indicate at the start of it whether you support or not support the Electoral Amendment Bill. It's important for us to know that, because in recording, we are able to gauge what the response is like from our communities. Thank you very much. You may now proceed. We'll also, translation will be done as a summary after your presentation, so he won't be interrupting your presentation. You're complete, and then he will summarize. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm Chulile Hadebe, coming from the African National Congress. As the ANC, we support the approach to the amendment of the Electoral Act based on the following reasons. We support on option one of the Ministerial Advisory Committee, as it contained in the amendment bill. The best option, it is the best option for implementing the Constitutional Court order. And also, the issue of the ANC supports the PR system. The PR system allows better representation of women, youth, and other marginalized groups. The PR system has meant that even small parties that get as little as 0.25% of the vote remain in parliament and have a voice in every legislature. It is hard to imagine any other small party winning constituency 26 when constituency says if there were 200 for parliament, we'd have at least 100,000 voters. We wish to also avoid the core challenges by either, by the independent parties that may feel disadvantaged. We also wish to maintain the principle in the Constitution that demand from us that our electoral system reflects overall proportionality. We have also never supported at first the past constituency 20 system, as it is very difficult to reach the same level of diverse representation when only one or maybe a handful of people are selected to represent a district, geographic area. Each geographic area has its own levels of diversity and diversion. The ANC, they support the PR system. It ensures that every political viewpoint shared by more than one quarter of 1% of the population is able to find representation in parliament and speaks on behalf of the constituency. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I just want to... I just want to ask if you have a written submission, and you may possibly have a copy to share it with our translator, so that it also helps for them to be able to, if they miss anything, they're able to reflect on it. Thank you, sir. You may proceed.
I just also want to note that we are sanitizing the mic and mic stand before and after every speaker.
Thank you very much. I've just seen two people enter. This row is for speakers. So if you are speaking, then you would sit here. If you're not, then you'd occupy the seats on either side. I just also want to note that we are sanitizing the mic and mic stand before and after every speaker.
Thank you. One wishes to greet the members of parliament, all the honorable members, members of council from different political parties, members of the community representing different civil organizations, and members of political parties, in particular, that of the ANC. My name is Tavis Omgadi. I will speak and make a submission on behalf of the ANC as a political party. I think one, before I engage and articulate on the position of the ANC, one wishes to testify that as the ANC, we support the Electoral Amendment Bill as proposed by the Advisory Ministerial Committee as subjected to option one. Furthermore, one wishes to raise some of the challenges in terms of approaching the implementation of such bill in its amendment. In raising such challenges, one wishes to raise a concern that the new system can result in a very long ballot paper that is impractical. This is encountered, for example, if we have 48 national parties in 2019 versus where possibly we could have 200 individuals who stand as independents in the ballot paper, who should then subsequently mean we have a number of 10 pages that will amount to 25 names per page. That then creates a challenge that we have long list of ballot papers that need to be processed by voters of the national public. A multi-page ballot is a big problem for voters, the IEC and parties. It will need a much longer time to vote, as voters must search for the name of their party or independent among many other names. A 10-page booklet for a ballot will mean the IEC needs to have a bigger budget for printing, distribution, and stuff. It then becomes inefficient in terms of financial constraints in especially understanding a global in especially understanding the global context of our economic balance of forces. Even ballot boxes will have to be 10 times as many to accommodate the ballots. Counters will have to check every page of every ballot to make sure it is not spoilt by a voter voting twice. Counting could also take 5 to 10 times as long. In this submission, we are suggesting that we should be able in our approach to find meaningful ways that will be, that will be able to accommodate effective measures in terms of counting, that will also allow the will of the people to cast their vote. We are very concerned that the amendments should find a way to not waste money and time and make elections too complicated and impractical. Ultimately, if voters found it difficult to vote and find their preferred choice on a ballot, the election would not reflect the will of the people. We therefore need to review the qualifications to stand as an independent candidate and as a new party. If you do not make a stricter... If we do not make it stricter, we can have thousands of candidates. In 2019, only 14 of the 48 registered parties made it into Parliament. We therefore propose to the ANC that new parties who are not yet represented in legislature or in Parliament and independent candidates should be able to demonstrate that they have a voter support and have some chances of winning a seat. We suggest that the threshold should be at least one third of the cohort needed for one seat in the previous election. It then suggests that we cannot have automatic qualification in making our submission to a candidate. We must consider a specific criteria that will allow and grant those who are independents and those who are new political parties to qualify before they can stand. And as an example demonstrated previously in the 2019 national election, the cohort of 0.25%, which then suggests that 250,000 people must at least demonstrate that they will vote for a particular independent or a political party in order to qualify. I submit, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, sorry, I will submit the notes to the interpreter.
Thank you, you may proceed.
Thank you Chair. I'm Chulile Hadebe, coming from the African National Congress. Now Deputy Mayor Okonahaparat, as the ANC, I'm here representing the ANC. I'm here representing the ANC. Alfred Duma, I'm here representing the ANC. As the ANC, we believe independents should compete on the same terms as parties. The Constitutional Court obliged Parliament to make amendments to the Act to allow independents to stand against parties in the national and provincial elections. It does not force us to change a system as that served as the country well and led to voters or parties ever contesting that we had free and fair national and provincial elections. We have to make sure that the system stays fair, simple and practical. A crowded and a long ballot can make elections a logistical nightmare. At the moment, the parties pay 200,000 deposit for national and 45,000 for provincial. They win back their deposit if they win one seat. The committee should decide if the same threshold could apply for deposit for independents. One seat is one seat, whether for a party or for an independent. Similar independents in words, independent candidates in parties that do not have any seats from the previous elections must be able to show that they have at least some support that could potentially win a seat. We should have a very long limit of support to allow serious parties and independents to participate without encouraging frivolous parties or people and overcrowding the process. We support that unrepresented parties and independent candidates should be able to show support at least one third of the votes needed to win one seat in the previous elections. This is the only way to keep the ballot paper to a reasonable size. The ANC feels that if the Parliament is divided into many small fractions, forming government is challenging. There is a bigger danger to using the current formula to for seats and a lot of parties come in on less than one seat's worth of votes. Votes required for a quota for a seat has often been between 40,000 to 60,000 seats, depending on the legislature and a voter turnout. But some small parties have one seat on 10,000 votes in a national assembly due to the formula for the largest remainder of votes being used to allocate leftover seats. The ANC feels that potentially we can have many small parties and independents occupying seats, occupying key seats that holds a balance of power in the legislature or Parliament where no party gets over 50%. This is happening at a municipal level and often leads to an unstable and temporary collisions. This could be much worse at national and provincial government where government could be paralysed by small parties and independents who represent only tiny fractions of voters but who can make stable governance impossible. As the ANC, we propose a two-stage process where all who meet the full quota for one seat are awarded a seat, whether as a party or independent. Once one is left who is entitled to sit based on admitting the full quota threshold, the remainder seat should then be given to the parties that have the highest average of voters per seat won. An independent can obviously occupy one seat and their surplus votes will be discarded. Any parties that have surplus votes should have this added to their total and divided by the number of seats already won by them. The party with the highest average will get a remainder seat. This is the only way proportional can be maintained and we can prevent a situation like we have currently where many parties with less than 0.25% support will occupy seats. Most of the countries with PR system have a much higher threshold of 3% to 7% of the votes before any seats are awarded. This is done to maintain stable government. It is difficult to negotiate across dozens of fractions and the total acceptable in international practice requires significant support of public presentations. I thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you very much. We are now going to proceed with any other submissions if there are. Can I see by a show of hands? Is there anyone else? Thank you sir, please take the first seat. Anyone else that wishes to make a submission? Remember, also indicated at the beginning that you can just summarise your submission if you want to and you can always submit it to us in full if you don't want to read the entire thing. Is there anyone else that wishes to make an oral submission? Because it seems like this is going to be the last round. Is there anyone else that wishes to make a submission? Okay, I'm going to leave this open after the speaker for the last time. So let's proceed for the sake of progress and time. Please continue.
I'm Bongithu, I'm Chulile. I'm here representing African National Congress. I'm representing the ANC. I'm representing the ANC. I'm representing the ANC. Disqualify if cheating, misprinting or manipulating system. No one should be allowed to cheat, to get onto a ballot paper. If you need to show support, it must be genuine support. If any unrepresented party or independent candidate or anyone working for them fakes or misrepresents signature by support to sign or try to mislead the IEC, there should be a very serious punishment for doing so. I submit, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that submission. Is there anyone that has possibly arrived now that would like to make a submission? We are going to allow for the final submissions seeing as there is no other indication. Are there no further submissions? Yes, yes, you want to check something? Yes, I did indicate that if you've missed anything, we would take your written submission. So you just need to present it to our staff and then we'll be able to record it accordingly. I've also confirmed with the staff that they have received the full submission. I'm just going to call for one final call for anyone who wants or wishes to make an oral submission or perhaps even just to show support or non-support of the bill. Okay, with that, that brings us to the end of our public hearing. Let me first thank everyone of you for being here. Thank you for the submissions that you have made and we have received. I want to explain the process. The process is one that we will take all the submissions from all of the public hearings, compile a report that goes before the Parliamentary Committee on Home Affairs. Thereafter, it will go to debate. Thereafter, it will go to debate in parliament in the National Assembly. It will be sent to the NCOP if they choose to do further consultations with provinces. They will also do that. And finally, it will then be voted on or accepted and then signed by the president. At that point, it will then be a bill that will be passed and we will follow. So that is the process that we are going to move with. And just in the form of a summary, some of the submissions that we received today in support of the bill. In fact, I've not heard any presenter say they don't support the bill. It was all in support and the submissions were made that the current PR system is supported. There was also a submission that said both political parties and independents should contest on the same level and not be different. I've also heard submissions about deposits being the same for all, requirements being the same for all. I've also heard submission about making it easy for independents to be able to participate and not making it difficult and further marginalize those who have already been marginalized. I've also heard a submission said this process is long overdue and we must be able to proceed speedily with it. There was also submission on the, I'm just going to refer to my notes, disqualifying candidates or punishment for those who actually cheat or defraud the system, et cetera, et cetera. Also, independent candidates must show substantial support before being able to contest in the sense of gaining signatures but also verified. And there was some mention of quotas and numbers, which is a bit technical, but obviously that will be put into the submission. Okay, so yeah, that's the submissions. Thank you. 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 Thank you.